Okay. Do you knock on the door, please?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Lionel. I'm the Vice Chair of the City of Nashville's Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the September 11th, 2024 zoning board meeting. I'm filling in for Rob Shaw, our Chair, who cannot be with us tonight. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes each. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer, we will try keeping track of the time here, and we'll notify you as your time is expiring. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those four special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any motion. The Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, and we have four tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting, we have the following full Board members and attendants. We have myself, Steve Lionel, again, I'm on the Vice Chair. We have Mr. Josh Neely, yes, who is our Acting Clerk, because Mr. JP Boucher is not with us tonight. And we also have the following alternate members in attendance, Mr. Andrew Sylvia and Mr. Joseph Patri. Given that we have four members in attendance, all full members and alternates will be participating and voting on each case unless one of them accuses themselves. In addition to the Board members, we have with us, to my left, Mr. Carter Falk, who's the Deputy Planning Manager. I will now take roll call attendance. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Sylvia.
Present.
Mr. Patri.
Present.
And I'm Mr. Lionel, I'm present. Let's see. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Okay. So are there any questions from the audience for how we're going to proceed? Not seeing any? Okay, very good. First case. Owners, Thomas DiAngeli, address 11 Michel Drive, Sheet C, Lot 854, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, for minimum lot frontage, 75 feet required, 66.68 feet proposed; and two, for minimum lot width, 90 feet required, 83.09 feet proposed. Both request to subdivide one lot into two lots and construct a new single-family home. This is in the R9 Zone, Word 5. Is there somebody here to present the case? Good evening. Please step up to the lectern and, speaking into the microphone, give us your name and your address, and if you need to, you can move the microphone up and down, or even pull it out and hold it in your hand.
Oh, gosh, it's really stuck. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thanks.
All right, great. Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Hardigan. I'm an attorney at Gottesman &amp; Hollis, 39 East Pearl Street, Nashville, New Hampshire. I'm here on behalf of my client, Thomas DiAngeli, of 11 Nashville, 11 Michel Drive. I just want to note on the application, the actual application, it's not in the notice, but I had accidentally said that the frontage was 50.33 feet. It is 66.68 feet.
I'm sorry, would you say that again, please?
The request, it's correct in the notice, it's just on the very first page of the application, if anyone happened to notice that. I had incorrectly said that the frontage was 50.33 feet.
Oh, I see, okay.
When it's really 68.68. So Carter caught it when he was doing the notice.
Very good.
But he's doing it this afternoon and said, oh, whoops.
Is your microphone on?
I think, I think so.
Maybe, sometimes you have to speak closer.
Closer? Is that better?
That's better, yes.
Okay, well, it's a little awkward.
You may need to pull it out and...
Can I do that?
Or...
You can pull the whole thing out.
No, you just need the microphone itself.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Is that better? Everybody can still hear me? Yes? Good? Okay. All right. So this property is just over a half an acre with a single-family home, and we'd like to subdivide it into one buildable lot. So actually, the property that we're asking for the variances for, which is for frontage and lot width, is the property that has the existing house on it. So the new created lot meets all zoning requirements. And I will just note, just for your clarification, someone had reached out to my office. On that plan, on the new proposed lot that meets all setbacks, there's a small triangle, and someone was asking me what that is. That's a landscaping easement for the benefit of the neighbor, but doesn't affect the frontage calculation. Just wanted to put that out there, because there was some questions about that. So largely, we're asking for two variances. The first is for the lot width, which is calculated from the setback, and we're short by 6.91 feet. And frontage, which is 83.9 feet, or 90 feet is, or that's the setback. The frontage is required 75 feet. We have 66.68 feet, so 8.32 feet short for this existing lot. And I'd also like to know, and I'm not sure if you've seen the property, but I can pass out aerial for frontage, because we don't have the screen, to see what I'm talking about. Do you have a picture of it? Here we go. Yeah, I just want to point out on that, it's a little dark, but you'll note that there's hedges along what would be the proposed new lot, and that is sort of where that 50-foot line is. So we're operating, the property is currently operating as if it only has frontage of 50 feet, and has had no problems so far. But I will get into the arguments here. Granted, this variance will not be contrary to the public interest. This is the largest lot in the neighborhood. We are proposing to have two lots, which are of this very similar size of every other lot in the neighborhood. It will have .31 acres on the existing home lot and .25 acres in the proposed new lot, which is keeping in spirit with the entire neighborhood. And just as a note, the required area in this zone is 9,000 square feet. Both these lots will have respectively 13,581 square feet and 11,295 square feet. And while we're asking for a variance for the lot width, where the existing lot is is significantly wide enough. It is 126 feet in wide, where the existing lot is. Granted, this variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. Both the lots meet the area requirements and will be similar in size. This will not threaten health, safety, and welfare of the public, as the lot will both be served by public water and sewer. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance is to avoid overcrowding and have sufficient sightlines. In this case, the house is existing. It has been operating in this fashion for as long as my client has owned it. The house will be set back from the road, and adding a new house in that area will not be overcrowded. The new proposed house will meet all setback requirements. This is also a note on a corner, and if it were, you know, if you look at the aerials of the property and all the other neighborhoods, they all seem to have cul-de-sacs to going between the two property, between the two streets. This is the only one that doesn't have a cul-de-sac, which impinges on the amount of frontage my client's property has on the corner. The variance for frontage and width setback, where the lot is larger, where the house is located, and will not alter the character of the neighborhood or threaten public health, safety, and welfare. Substantial justice will be done by allowing, granting these variances, because we're only asking, we're short 8.32 feet for frontage and 6.1 feet, I mean, the width of my arms were short for the setback. This will not harm the general public or any other individual, and will allow reasonable use of the property. There'll be sufficient width between the properties and the lot lines. The proposed use will not diminish values of surrounding properties. This will just result in creation of a new lot that will fit within the character of the neighborhood and meet all zoning regulations. There will be no adverse effect to the values of surrounding properties, particularly in this case. The only difference will be a home instead of some trees, but there's no interest in the neighbors viewing trees, unfortunately. Special conditions exist, and the literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. This property, as I said, is on a corner without a cul-de-sac, so the property lacks frontage, just by the nature of it. There are sufficient sightlines and distance between the homes. The acting frontage, as I said, with all the, there's significant hedges that basically creates what would be the frontage after the subdivision. And, let's see. There'll be safe and adequate sightlines, and there will not be overcrowding within the neighborhood, and the proposed use for a single-family lot is reasonable. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Sylvia.
Have any of the budding neighbors said any concerns about the change in frontage or anything else?
To our knowledge, no. The only, like I said, I got an email from someone, they didn't identify themselves, asking about the easement area, and asking if that impacted the frontage calculation, which it does not.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Not seeing anybody? Okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody? Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? One at a time, please come up. Please, adjust the microphone to what's convenient and give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, 15 Penob Scott Road.
And your name?
I'm Judith Turner, and this is Alfred Turner, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me? You okay?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, good. All right, we do write a letter, and we have it signed by five of the homeowners around us, okay? And I'll read it to you, is that okay?
That's fine. Mr. Falk, did we receive this letter?
I did not receive it.
Okay.
We are writing this letter as very concerned neighbors and the butters to the proposed variance at 11 Michel Drive, to all allow the property to be subdivided and built upon. The City of Nashville Engineering Department has explained to several residents of Penob Scott Road that this lot was not buildable due to ledge and car-sized boulders on the property. Penob Scott Road was planned to be extended to Michel, but abandoned due to the ledge and large boulders on the property. Our concern is that any blasting so close to existing homes could cause hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage to these homes. There are at least 10 homes within a couple hundred of feet of this proposal. Any construction on this lot should require an insurance bond to cover any damages to existing homes from blasting or boulder pounding. The Penob Scott cul-de-sac is currently a neighborhood playground and gathering place. Children with adult supervision ride their bikes and scooters within 40 feet of this property. How long will the neighborhood have to endure the hardship from noise and dust and abandon our children and grandchildren's scooter and bicycle play area while heavy construction equipment tears apart the ledge and boulder hill on this property? Any blasting should require a pre-blasting survey of existing homes to document any damage from this construction. The submitted subdivision plan to the Board is not complete. The proposed lot has a recorded easement on it, which I believe Tom's attorney has spoken of. The existing house also has a yard setback violation, and after all these years of builders thinking that this property was not buildable, now it could be at the cost of the character and hardship of our neighborhood from the variances and heavy construction equipment. In summary, A, any blasting or boulder pounding at this site should require a sufficient insurance bond to cover damages from blasting and boulder crushing. A detailed pre-blast survey should be required of existing homes to cover potential damages. Any building that's constructed on this property should fit on a property without any additional variances, and a time limit on the length of construction should be required. And then, we do have a, sorry. We do have a picture that I'm going to, you know, let you have, and this is looking toward a proposed lot through boulders on the lot from 15 Penob Scott Road, and we oppose to any blasting to make the lot buildable, as we have a gas line within 40 feet of the property. I believe one of our neighbors...
Ernestine?
Oh, what, you want me to? What? You, I'm sorry. He's his boss.
You have, yeah, okay, when you come up, okay.
There's five, yeah, there should be five copies, not of the picture, but of the letter. Any questions?
We need a little time to look at this.
Okay.
Just, this is a matter of record. It would have been helpful if this had been submitted to the Planning Department in advance so that we could...
We weren't notified until, like, I don't know, about a week ago.
That's...
No, we had one thing saying, if you want to, you know, pros and cons, if you want to come to this meeting, and we just got it by certified mail. Sorry, I'm sorry. And a lot of people didn't get it because they weren't home to receive it.
Okay. Any questions from the Board for the Turners? Okay, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? Please come up and state your name and address for the record, and give us your thoughts.
Hi, Mary Jane Lugo, 11 Penob Scott Road. I am in the cul-de-sac that abuts Michel, yeah. Five years ago, I applied for a variance, very unexpected, for an addition to my home. I was surprised to learn that my builder got pushback because of land that I thought was ours. And I learned through my hearing that Penob Scott Road was supposed to be a straightaway through to Michel. And because of that, the way they made our cul-de-sac, the lollipop head, I didn't have as much land as I thought. And I'd asked, why wasn't the completion through Michel Drive? And they said, there's so much ledge there that the blasting was going to be somewhat catastrophic. So what I have here is, and my neighbor just gave it to me, is actually two existing holes in the ledge that show where the dynamite was attempted. So there was an attempt to blast there, and it was abandoned. We're all on the cul-de-sac, all the immediate neighbors who abut this property, and I have to disagree with the statement saying that it wouldn't threaten the public, the health, or the safety, or the welfare. I think it directly will, with the gas line, with our foundations being in jeopardy with the blasting, and just the simple fact of removing the trees, because the cul-de-sac is shadowed by now what looks like a forest, and with the setback requirement, or their setback that they're asking for, you're going well into where those trees are, and I know removing the trees might not seem like a big deal for some, but I've been on that property for 25 years, and I think it's going to change the whole face of that cul-de-sac, if not destroy my foundation at the same time.
Any questions from the Board? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any other people in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, seeing none. The Attorney, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Elizabeth Hardigan.
See?
Elizabeth Hardigan.
Hardigan, Attorney Hardigan. Please, you come up, and you have five minutes to respond to the comments that you just heard.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No? Maybe?
If you speak up, then they can probably hear you.
I guess, our biggest comments back to that would be, we don't know exactly what the extent of construction would be yet, but that's because we need to, this is our first step, and we understand we will be going to Planning Board after the fact for a subdivision, and we'll have more information there and provide all the health, safety, welfare, and construction, all of those information, all that information will be provided at Planning Board. At this time, we're just looking for frontage and width on the other lot, not on the lot that complies with all of the subdivision, with all of the zoning, which is the lot that they're concerned about, that the neighbors are concerned about.
Okay. And I did hear a comment about setback was not being met, but that if the existing house, where there's nothing that we would do...
Correct, right. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use. If I, I don't know the exact measurement, but my guess is it's probably a little close in the setbacks, but I don't, it predates the zoning, or it's...
And the proposed lot line would not change that non-conforming setback?
Correct, that's the rear setback.
Or create additional non-conforming setbacks.
Right. There's no setback issues for either the proposed or the, with the proposed lot line.
Okay.
So it's really, we're just talking, really, unfortunately, or unfortunately, I understand the neighbors' concerns, but these variances are just for the frontage on the front of the existing lot and the lot width, and that's largely because the lot width is calculated at the setback line of the frontage. So if you had moved that back one or two more feet, we wouldn't even have a lot width issue, because the lot just gets bigger in the back.
I see, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, so, oh, you have a question?
Go ahead.
So the folks who were in opposition were speaking of the fact that originally Penob Scott was supposed to be a through-streeted Michel. I'm assuming, I mean, it looks to me on the map here that this is one property privately held. I mean, is this like 20 years ago we're talking about, 30 years ago? Like, do we have any idea of the timeframe of when this supposed cut-through from Penob Scott to Michel was supposed to happen?
I have no knowledge of when the cut-through was supposed to happen, but these are established neighborhoods. So I assume this was years and years ago that they were, when they were developing it. I believe my client's property was built in 58...
72.
72. So probably then is when they were contemplating that cut-through.
So that makes sense, and I assume your client's property has no additional easements on it besides the one we talked about. There's nothing the City can come through and say, hey, we're going to extend Penob Scott to Michel, like...
Correct.
This is a done deal from 30 years ago.
Correct.
40 years ago, whatever it is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a question? No? Thank you.
Don't see any? Okay, have a seat. Okay, at this point, one and only one person who's speaking in opposition or with questions or concerns may come up and take five minutes to respond to what Attorney Hardigan just And again, please give your name and address for the record.
Mary Jane Lugo, 11 Penob Scott Road. I guess I'm looking for perhaps some guidance here, because I was in his shoes. I know what it's like to want to do something to your property. I guess my biggest concern is, and I understand, I'm glad she clarified, that she understands we're concerned, but they're here for setback variances and whatnot. Where do we go from here to put in a request for us that we're severely concerned about the blasting that's going to happen in the neighborhood?
Yeah. Well, the Fire Department handles blasting permits and would require, would have some requirements about that.
Because I feel like maybe that's the one we need to come to, because the next step? Because I understand this is the beginning?
The next step would be the Planning Board.
Okay.
As Attorney Hardigan said, because any subdivision, a subdivision is handled by the Planning Board. What we're doing here is we're looking at the request to have less frontage and less lot width than what ordinance permits. That's the only thing that we're concerned with here on the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
The Planning Board would have more, a broader set of things they would look for, and you would certainly be welcome to speak before the Planning Board, but as far as blasting is concerned, all of the requirements for that are set by the City Fire Department.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm not familiar with what they are, but I know that they have a lot of extensive requirements regarding that. I also don't know if the current homeowner or the proposed developer is aware of what the issues are. They're going to learn.
Right.
But for what we're doing here tonight, we're only concerned with the street frontage and the lot width.
Right. And looking at the lot, I know it's a very large lot, and the three of us here are lucky to have the first, second, and third biggest lots on our street, so we can understand and appreciate that elbow room. That lot that we're talking about tonight is quite wide, but severely shallow. And as it's shallow goes into, the shallowness goes into our cul-de-sac, and that's really what, unless they're going to plan to build a very long house and keep it quite shallow, which would actually take from the neighborhood, because no houses are like that. My concern, number one, is the blasting, but number two is taking away that character of that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, well, they would be building another single-family house, probably similar size to what's on that lot right now.
Right, that would be the plan.
Because that's what would fit. We have testimony that the proposal would meet all of the existing setbacks in the ordinance.
Okay.
And as, you know, any property owner who's adjacent to a treed lot can understandably be upset when that gets developed, but unfortunately, that's sort of what happens, and not much that we can do about that. But I think for here, what we're talking about are specifically the frontage and the lot width.
Right. So that next step is something I'm going to need to...
The next step would be the Planning Board. They consider many more issues.
One moment. My neighbor has a language barrier, and he sent me a note, so I'm going to speak for him. I just have to clarify what his note is.
I have a question.
Well, he said, the lot cannot exist without variance. They need to address the safety now.
Well, the very, that's what we're here for.
Right.
Is for the variances, and as far as anything else is concerned, that's the Planning Board's role.
Okay. So we'll...
You will, Mr. Sylvia?
Oh, I'm sorry, I had a question. I'll wait till you're done.
Well, that's, I'm done.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I don't know if you'd have the information on this, but is, would the two new lots be comparable in terms of lot size and frontage to other nearby lots? Do you have that information?
To the other, sorry, it's...
Let me bring this back. It appeared that the created lot and the current lot would be similar in lot size and... and frontage to other nearby houses? Do you have information on the other houses in the neighborhood?
On Michelle, no. I just know Penob Scott.
Okay.
Yeah.
And bringing, dividing that would put it on par to what is on our side of the trees. I don't know what's on the other side.
Yeah, looking at a plot plan of Michelle and Penob Scott, I would say that the proposed lots are not out of character for the lot sizes on Michelle.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Just the blasting and other dangerous stuff.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Yeah, I don't really need to see this. Okay, Mr. Patrick, your comments?
You know, I certainly don't want to discount any of the concerns about the safety. And obviously, that is something for the Planning Board to consider. But in our role, strictly looking at the zoning variances, I'm in favor of granting it.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia?
I concur with that. I greatly appreciate this map here. Like Mr. Patrick said, those things are things to be considered, but that's not within our purview. So I would support this variance, these two variances.
Mr. Neely?
So this is the largest lot on, to my view, on Saranac and Michelle. I do think this is a good subdivision. When you look at the current house there, it is kitty-cornered on the back of the lot. I do like how they are trying to make only one non-conforming lot rather than two. Appreciate that. With the curvature of Saranac and Michelle, and just the way that property is not, it's slid towards the, we'll call it the south side of Saranac. You know, I don't think there's any other way they could subdivide that. I certainly am cognizant of the issues behind. As Mr. Lionel pointed out, we're not, you know, the trees coming down on somebody's lot is really not something we're here to talk about here tonight. With that being said, we didn't hear any testimony of reduced property values. And so really, this, and with the new lot size, which will fit exactly into the size of lots in this neighborhood, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. I'm also in favor, the request for the variances are fairly minor. And the new lots will be similar in size and appearance to those on Michelle. They may be different from those on other streets. But on the street that this is on, it's normal. So I'm in favor. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Sylvia, thank you.
Okay. Um, get this microphone here.
In the application of Thomas DeAngeli, owner, 11 Michelle Drive, Sheet C, Lot 854, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. For one, for minimum lot, frontage 75 feet required, 66.8, 68 feet proposed. And two, for minimum lot width, 90 feet required, 83.09 feet proposed. Both request to subdivide one lot into two lots and construct a new single-family home in the R9 Zone Ward 5. I move to approve this application. I believe a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance, given the size of the lot compared to its neighbors. I believe it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The requested sizes are not significantly different than the requirements in the ordinance. It will not, the frontage and lot size requests will not adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. Those two requests are also not contrary to the public interest. And those two requests do substantial justice.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Neely, thank you for your second. All those in favor? Okay, and no opposed, so it's four to nothing. And the variances have been approved. Congratulations, there are 30 days that somebody can request a rehearing. But as we also said, this particular subdivision needs to go to the Planning Board. And any construction issues such as blasting would have to be approved by the Fire Department. So you have your next steps. Moving on to case number two. Owners. Owners Thomas Daniel Brenz Taveras and Lady Carolina Franco de Brenz, address 6 Radcliffe Drive, Sheet E, Lot 544, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E2 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 20 feet existing, an extra 12 feet proposed for a total width of 32 feet. This is the R9 Zone Ward 5. Is somebody here to present the case? Thank you, please come up and come up to the lectern and adjust the microphone to your convenience. Give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do. Yeah, you can definitely pull it down.
Okay, good. Hi, good night. My name is Lady Franco de Brenz. We're here, I'm here for the 6 Radcliffe Drive. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Yeah, understandable to take your time.
So, my husband is not here because he has class today. I think he can be here. So, we just want to stand or park in love. Because my sister-in-law and her husband, they live with us in the same house. And we need more space. So we have, we have three cars and they had one. And so my grandmother-in-law, she's going to live with us too. That's why we need to stand or park in love a little bit more. We have 20, 20 feet and we just want 12, 12 feet more.
Yeah, that's what's in the application, yes.
Yes.
Anything else? At the moment? Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, no. Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely?
Is the garage usable?
Yes.
For, for a car, or do you have storage?
Only for, only for, I think it's only for one car. And we have storage too. Yeah.
Is there a car that's being parked in that garage?
Uh, no. It's not that big. So we have, my husband, he has a truck, it's really big, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't hear what you're saying.
So, the truck he has is-
That's okay, he's got a big truck.
I don't know how many-
We understand.
He has a big truck, yeah.
We understand.
Yeah, and he has also a van. And then we have a Mercedes and then a Toyota too. That's my Toyota. So, he has in the garage a lot of like, gym stuff, a part of storage, so it's like-
Okay.
Okay, so the garage is being used the way a lot of people use garages.
Yeah. And one more, one more thing is winter is coming. We don't want the cars in the parking in the street. That's another point.
Yeah, I noticed that there was a truck being parked on the grass.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, one more time, so you said you have your sister, or sister-in-law living with you with a car?
Yeah.
Mother-in-law's coming with a car. If I got my count right, you had about six cars there, right? You're not going to get, six cars are not going to fit anywhere in close to what you're trying to do here.
No.
Is it five cars, six cars? How many cars?
Five cars.
Five cars?
Only five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sylvia?
Just for the minutes, could we get the name of the young lady here, the second person? Just your name for, so the record.
My name?
Yeah.
Nayara. Nayara.
Nayara.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I did notice that the, it looked like at one time there was a two-car garage that was maybe converted into living space. Because the way that it looked to me is if they're, just the house design, it looked like at one point had been a two-car garage. Do you know if that's correct?
Two-car garage?
Well, it isn't now. But it's just the shape of the angles of the front of the house. It looked as if it might have had a two-car garage at one time. Maybe not when you lived there.
Yeah, maybe not, yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's everything. Okay, you may have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely, your comments?
Yeah, I'm still undecided, so I'm interested to hear what everybody else has to say. Five to six cars aren't going to fit there. Which is why I brought up the question about the garage. I know we all do drive-bys. What I saw was a large pickup truck. It looks like there's a little bit of a cutout next to the house, so the large pickup truck can fit nicely. I do think they probably get three cars there now. Looks like that says the application says they have 20 feet now. Obviously, they can have another four feet per regulations. I could go either way on this one. I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Mr. Sylvia?
I think 12 feet itself is not a significant change. Again, I don't know, per what Ms. Neely said, I don't know if that many cars would fit there. But they believe that it can, so they're, in the end, we're bound by what they're asking, not by what else is there, in my opinion. So, yeah, I think 12 is reasonable.
Mr. Patrick?
Yeah, I tend to agree. I think it's a reasonable ask. Also agree that six, five or six may not fit there. But again, I think it's a reasonable request, and so I'm in favor.
Yeah, I was a little struggling with it, as I generally do with wide driveway requests. Small house and lots and lots of vehicles being parked there. But it's on this interesting sort of curve on the street. And I'm not as bothered by it as I might be in other circumstances. So I'm sort of tentatively in favor, but not strongly. Mr. Neely, did you have any further comments?
I do not. I mean, it is a good point that they are on a curve there. The house is definitely set towards the front of the property. So I think, quite frankly, my colleagues have probably convinced me to vote in favor of this application.
Somebody care to make a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Patrick, thank you.
I move that we approve the variance requested for 6 Radcliffe Drive, requesting a variance from the Land Use Code Section 190-17E2 to exceed the maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 20 feet existing, an extra 12 feet proposed for a total width of 32 feet. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that the variance is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that the variance will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We haven't had any testimony that it would. We find the variance is not contrary to public interest and would constitute substantial justice.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Neely, thank you for your second. All those in favor? It's four to nothing, congratulations, your variance has been approved. Again, please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the Planning Department if you have any questions. And thank you for doing the right thing of applying for the variance. So many people don't.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to case number three. Owners are Karen Gordon and Christine Runyon, addresses 2 Morningside Drive, Sheet 2, Lot 29, requesting the following. First, a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 3, to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the lower level of an existing home. And 2, variance from Land Use Code Section 190-32B1 to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet permitted, 1,057 square feet proposed. This is in the RA Zone Ward 7. Okay, please come up, adjust the microphone to your convenience and give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do.
Hi, my name's Christine Runyon. I live at 2 Morningside Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. I own the home along with my sister Karen Gordon, who's over here. We just purchased the house about six weeks ago. I'm coming here from Maine. I recently got custody of my 10-year-old grandson, Kaden, that you see over there. Decided to move back home to be closer to family for support. Spoke to my sister about it. She was wanting to buy a home. We thought together we could make that a possibility. The next step was finding that perfect home so that we could have our own space, which we found in 2 Morningside Drive. It was actually fantastic. It has a living area upstairs and downstairs. The nice thing about the downstairs is the space was already there, excuse me, as well as an entryway, lots of windows, parking was great. I was hoping to drop this proposal off. I was pretty naive in thinking I could just call a contractor and within 10 days I'd have all the stuff that I needed to present to you. Found out that that's not the case. I do have pictures in here, if you'd like to see the parking, the entryway, where the work's going to be done, that you can look at after. But I will say, as far as the ADU, it meets all the requirements as far as having an existing entrance from downstairs to upstairs, the parking. I'm not asking to change any of the outside. Basically, really, it's just going to be updating a lot of the inside. Not adding any doors. I am requesting that we take some footage from a wall that's in a hallway down there just to open up an area for a kitchen, should it be approved for the kitchen. But other than that, not really going to change anything whatsoever. The variance comes in as the space is already there. I'm not adding more space. It is two rooms down there, a bathroom, a living area, and then a small area where I would make the kitchenette, but it's already there. Two windows, the two rooms that it has, that you could make bedrooms. It does have very, very large windows in there already. However, the opening doesn't meet code as far as getting out. So those windows will be changed for code reasons. But other than that, I think you have the plot plan that we put in there?
Yeah, we have lots of-
And if you'd like to see the pictures?
We have lots of material with pictures. And, you know, the pictures are probably not really what we're concerned with. I mean, it's looking at the layout of that floor because you're requesting a variance for the area.
Correct.
And, you know, we have that diagram. I see that there's a bedroom at one end and then a long hallway, and then there's the rest of it. So this is, this is the entire basement of the house?
No, there's actually, I don't know why, I think that's just where there's going to be a window, the window installed. There is actually another room and a closet and a bathroom on this hallway here. There's one side of the hallway here where the kitchenette is proposed to be.
Oh, I see.
And on the other side where it's empty, there's actually another room there and a closet and a bathroom.
I see. And where is the, where is the access from the main part of the house?
It's in the back. I have a picture of that, if you'd like to see it. But it's a door and it's got big windows. And you just walk to the backyard, it's all already there.
Well, that's to the outside. I mean, the ordinance requires a door, an interior door.
Oh, I have that. I have a picture of that here as well, that you can see.
All you need to do is tell me that there is one.
Yeah, so in the main living area, there's an entryway here, that with stairs that goes to upstairs.
Okay, I see that you signed the document about the special regulations, the accessory dwelling unit affidavit, except you are requesting a variance for the 750 square feet.
Correct.
But all of the other items you say you're going to meet. Questions from the board? Mr. Sylvia?
So the entrance to the first floor, is that picture number nine on your map here?
I don't have that copied.
Okay.
But I do have a picture of it here.
Yeah, it's like, let me show you, like, right here. Is that upstairs?
Is that upstairs?
No, that's to where the water boiler and everything is.
Okay.
So if you look here, this line right here, see that little, I just, right there, that entry right there, back there.
Are you done, Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Not seeing any? Okay, can I have a seat? Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody with questions?
Next door, we have no objection.
Okay, that, why don't you come up and just give your name and address for the record, and tell us that, because that's where we are in the meeting.
I'm Joe Bingham. I'm at 2 Morningside, which is next door in spite of the numbers. And we don't have any objection to the change.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else wishes to speak in favor? You're with him? That's, that's all right, I have to ask. And I don't see anybody else in the audience, so there doesn't seem to be anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition.
I'm sorry, I'm at the two, I'm three there too.
All right, so you're- You're at 3 Morningside Drive, okay. Thank you. Okay, close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Let's see, Mr. Sylvia, your comments?
Okay. I, copying Mr. Neely from last time, I see no issues here, but I'm happy to hear what my colleagues think. Yeah, I'll wait to make a decision before I hear everyone else's opinion.
Okay, Mr. Neely?
So I'm in favor of both the special exception and the variance. A, these folks are doing the right thing to come and get the variance and special exception, appreciate that. And it looks like this thing is, you know, when we talk, first of all, about the, just about the ADU itself, we are proponents in Nashua of the ADUs, I don't think in my time on the board we've turned any ADUs down. This one looks like it's already pretty much in place, from the person they purchased it from, whether it was permitted or not, they're looking to change it to an ADU. Pretty straightforward, they have signed the affidavit, it, you know, it has everything that we ask for in an ADU, so, and for those reasons, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Patri?
I can't say it better than Mr. Neely.
Okay, and I'm also in favor of both the variance and the special exception. Somebody care to make a motion? Oh, Mr. Patri, thank you.
Sure, so I move that we approve the variance request for-
Do the special exception first, please.
Sorry. Requesting the special exception for 2 Morningside Drive from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the lower level of the existing home, and two, move to approve the requested variance from Land Use Code Section 190-32 to exceed the maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet permitted, 1,057 square feet proposed. For the special exception, we find that this is listed as a special exception, Table 15-1, we find that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, we find that it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or other municipal systems, we find that the special regulations are fulfilled, and that the exception will not impair integrity, or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents.
We're gonna do the special, voting the special exception separately-
Okay, definitely, okay.
And then we'll vote on the variance. Okay, so you made a motion to approve the special exception, is that correct?
Yeah.
Does that have a second? Thank you for Mr. Sylvia for your second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, special exception is granted, now we'll move on to the variance. Mr. Patri, continue.
Sure, I move that we approve the variance requested from Land Use Code Section 190-32 to exceed the maximum size of the accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet permitted, 1,057 square feet proposed. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that the variance is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, that it is not contrary to public interest, and will do substantial justice.
I'll second it, just get my name in there. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous, four to nothing. Okay, congratulations, your special exception and variance have been approved. Again, you have, there are 30 days that somebody can file a rehearing request. If you have any questions, speak to Mr. Falk in the planning department. And good luck on your project. And that concludes the cases for tonight. We have minutes.
Hey, guys, we're still going.
Good night, folks, we still have additional business to conduct.
We're still on the record, yeah.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, we have minutes from the meeting of August 27th, has everybody had a chance to look them over? Are there any edits, corrections to be made?
No edits.
I didn't see any. Motion to accept the minutes. Mr. Sylvia, thank you for that, second. Mr. Patri, okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes? Four to nothing, okay. We have no rehearing request? We have, we did get an agenda for the next meeting, September 24th, yes?
Go back to the Tuesday meetings.
Yes, back to Tuesday meetings. Does anybody see any regional impact?
No.
I did not. Nope. Not seeing anybody with any regional impact, okay. So, there's that, and motion to adjourn? Okay, motion to adjourn, we are adjourned at 7:27.